I know. Sorry Greg, we're gonna... We're gonna start, sorry to interrupt you. Well, that's good, it'll be hard to hear, but that'll be okay. Uh, thank you everybody, we're, we'd like to dismiss or, not dismiss, excuse, thank you. We're not gonna dismiss the mayor, we're just gonna excuse the mayor, um, he is with family. Um, he may be joining us hopefully, if not, we wish him well, hopefully he's got a new grandbaby.
And Brian is online.
And then Brian's also online, um, traveling this week, so.
Oh, there comes the mayor, he's talking in.
Perfect, the mayor is present, wonderful. Okay, then we will call this meeting to order, and we will go into our work session. Um, starting with number one, uh, proposal for Big Tooth Mountain or Maple Festival to be a city-sponsored event. Um, so that'll be Councilmember Lunt, and then also Greg Witt, so please.
Do you have a green light there?
Let me just...
Perfect.
So the light's on, and that means...
Your life.
Let me just start with why we want to do this, and then I'll let you explain it, and then we can have council members...
Yeah, I'll do that, just give you a quick background, about three years ago, a neighbor and I just tapped five trees. And we had more sap than we knew it to do with, and so we, we, uh, reported that, um, on a state online database. And within about a week, uh, Utah State University contacted me and said, "Hey, we have a, a grant," and, um, uh, it's called the Acer Development Grant from the US Department of Agriculture, "to expand maple syrup production beyond just, you know, Vermont and, and New England where we, uh, really associate that with." And, and so we, and he said, "Do you wanna participate?" I said, "Oh, sure." And, and they, they provided us with an evaporator, a reverse osmosis machine, all of the equipment we needed to, to process and produce maple syrup. And we, we wanted to take this seriously, so we got all the necessary food permits to, to bottle and sell our maple syrup, and, um, and decided the best way to sell it, rather than turn it over to a, a retail store and, and take, and have to give them, you know, 50%, is to sell it all right here. And, and also, we, we realized very early on that this is more than just a product, more than just syrup. This is an opportunity to build community, to add, uh, quality of life, um, aspects, uh, features to, to Woodland Hills, and, um, and really create something very special. We can do that because Woodland Hills, because of our elevation, big-toothed maple trees only grow at an elevation of 5,500 to 7,000 vertical feet. Well, that, that's us, that's Woodland Hills, right? And, and so, um, we, we, last year, we, this was our fir-, last year was our first year, uh, as, as the demonstration site for this, uh, FDA grant, and, uh, we very quickly became the, the number-one demonstration site, uh, for, for this grant, because we have all the trees right here. And so, th- this syrup is produced by, from the, from the sap of, you know, single ingredient product, from the sap of big-toothed maple trees among our neighbors. Um, Gary and Mylan have now 60 trees tapped, I have about 100 trees tapped. We have about, about 25 or 30 neighbors that are tapping their trees, and we'll have about 800 trees tapped this year. And, uh, so it's a, it's a wonderful way to, to connect neighbors, to build community, but also, there, there's some aspects, um, that help us provide food security, to manage our woods, and we know that, that woodlands that are, are managed and cared for are more, less prone to wildfires, and, and they're more beautiful. And, and also, if people recognize the, that their, that their woods have economic value, then maybe they're less inclined to cut down a 200-year-old maple tree and put up a, a Home Depot shed, you know? Uh, I, I think it's, it's, it's a great way to promote, to promote, um, community values, and, and, and what we're doing, I think aligns so beautifully with, with Woodland Hills, and our, our love for the outdoors, our love for our large lots and woods. Uh, we also offer educational programs, and, um, participate with Utah County State Fair and doing, doing educational programs there. We're, uh, making every Friday during March is a School Friday, and we're having homeschool groups and, and local school groups come by and, and see this whole process, which is, you know, most of us, if you're like me, um, you don't have any agricultural roots, you didn't grow up far, as farmers, and, uh, this, this really connects us with that agricultural way of life. So, in our first year of production, we became the, uh, Woodland Hills' leading agricultural crop. As Carrie mentioned, we're the first agricultural crop in Utah, uh, for the, for the, for the season in Utah.
For the state of Utah, yeah. And being recognized by the Utah State Farm Bureau as such.
Yeah, and we are the, uh, the largest producer of maple syrup, um, in the Intermountain West, and probably the second or third-largest producer in, um, in west of the Mississippi. Of course, ma-, most of the maple syrup production takes place in, you know, Vermont, and New Hampshire, and Michigan, those kinds of places. Uh, but, but it's a, it's a pure, single-ingredient product, just made from our trees. And it takes a lot of work to do that, but, uh, that, that's our result. So, our invitation here, uh, the, the, the festival is an important part of our agric-, our educational mission, but also of our community-building, uh, mission. And, and what we'd like to do is invite the city to be a sponsor of, of this event. And, and this can all be done at no cost to the city. Um, by, by being a sponsor of this event, we have, we already have a number of sponsors. Um, Stone Heaven Dental, and Red Barn, and a few others that, that kind of align with, with our mission, um, are, are sponsors. But by the city being a sponsor, it gives you several benefits. First of all, uh, I think it, it, as I mentioned, the community-building, the, the, the quality-of-life aspects, the educational programs we offer, the, uh, the city can set up a booth there, it gives you an opportunity to, at no cost to the city, to be able to connect with, you know, promote the city's programs, and connect with, with members of the community at the city's booth, in the same way you would with the, the Fire Expo that you have here, or Woodland Hills Days.
How many people attended last year?
What's that?
How many people did we say attended?
About 600, about 600.
That's what I, I was saying, that I was thinking that there was quite a lot, plus we had a lot of media coverage, and Utah State also filmed and, and interviewed quite a few people, and it's, and their, their, um, government liaison actually contacted me.
Yeah, we, we hoped to hold it in the park, but, um, we had our biggest snowstorm of the year, I think on April 5th, April 4th or 5th, right?
Right before.
Yeah, and, and the, the festival was set for, I think, April 7th, so no way that was gonna happen in the park. So we, we just held it out in the street, and arranged kind of the parking, and blocked off the street, and, and got all the, you know, agreement of the neighbors, and, uh, so that worked out, really worked out quite well. But, uh, so we set the, the festival two weeks later, April 20th this year, which I think will be a, uh, I think, uh, more likely to have, well, I, I don't think we're gonna have s- snow on April...
What time are you thinking?
Uh, it'd be a Saturday, April 20th from 10:00 to 2:00.
10:00 to 2:00.
Well, I believe Greg, that the, the groundhog saw his, or didn't see his shadow, so it should be a shorter...
Well, the groundhog doesn't have a real good reputation for...
I'm just trying to be optimistic for you.
Not, not in Utah.
So, Janet, I think... From a city standpoint, the reason it would be, um, a good idea, there's several things they have to do, um, you know, that are requirements, uh, from the city to be in compliance, and so, they'll still have to get the food permit on their own, um, and we'll work on the porta-potties, will still be a cost, but the city, if we partner with the festival, the city can provide trash cans, insurance, we won't have to charge the park rental fee, we can help with the electrical, um...
And security, and the sheriff.
And security, and they'll, they'll get people to help with the parking, um, and Greg will do the advertising, but we can also help provide the sheriff. And what Jody suggested was, in exchange, um, we would charge a small rental fee for some of the booths that would raise funds for the porta-potty, and things like that. Um, but the festival itself is a nonprofit, so it's something that we could partner with. I spoke with the mayor about it, he, he thought it was a good idea, but he wanted to hear council's input and see if anybody had any objections, um, to it being a city...
And Janet, can I actually, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I did have a question for Greg, and for you, based on that, uh, presentation. So, Greg, you, uh, you indicate that it would be city-sponsored, and so I was under the impression that it would be a city event, in the same way that Woodland Hills Days are a city event, so is this going to be sort of...
He's, he's asking if it's a city event or a city partnership where the, they have a big-tooth, Mayor, just for your event, your information, they have a big-tooth maple board that...
This would still be a private event sponsored by, by our organization, Big Tooth Maple Project, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and, and we would invite the city to, to be a, to, to be a sponsor at that event, at no charge and no cost to the city. I, I, and I'm talking with Jody, she indicated that the, that the insurance, being covered under the city's insurance, would not incur any additional costs to the city. The, the security coverage from the, from the sheriff would not result in any additional costs.
But I think it has to be a city event for those things to be covered, is that right, Mayor?
Correct. That would, that would be my understanding. I, I just wanna make sure, so if, if, if it's gonna be treated like a different animal, like we're a sponsor along with other sponsors, that, what was that?
Go ahead.
Can, can you not hear me?
No, we can, go ahead.
Oh, okay, I, I was just, uh, it, that, that's a little bit different than I was, um, understanding it to be. I, I thought it was going to be an actual city event, and so, um, it, it, it might be something where we've got, and I, let me also just say, I think this is good for our brand, I think this would be a good thing for us to be a part of, but, but that is a little bit different than what I was envisioning. Um, I, I, like I said, I thought it was gonna be like a city festival, in, in the same vein as Woodland Hills Days.
I can see it happening either way, either the city as a sponsor, or the, this, make it a city event, and, but then, basically, the, the work and the, but in order to do it at no cost to the city, um, the easiest way for, to do that would be for, for our organization to provide the, do all the signage, to set up the work, and, um, and we, we, last year, we rented the porta-potty, last year, we, uh, we did all, paid for all the signage, and, and so...
So Greg, if, if it was a city event, it would be a lot like Woodland Hills Days. Woodland Hills Days had its own committee, I, I wouldn't take over, it would come under my umbrella because I do events for the city, but I would just be the liaison. You would still have your own board, your own committee, just like we do with Woodland Hills Days, just like we do with the Fire Expo, the Fire Department does that one, so you're, you would still, but for you to qualify for the insurance and the sheriff, 'cause we could sponsor, like we could let you use the park, those kinds of things, but to qualify for the insurance and the sheriff, it would have to be a city event.
And, and that, that's doable too, it could be, it could be a city event, and, um, give the city a high-profile position there as, as, as a host and a sponsor, and, uh, but, but we have a committee that's, in fact, they're, they're meeting later tonight to plan the kinds of events. We, we like to make it a, a country fair kind of atmosphere, kind of a, with a maple theme, and, and a petting zoo, and, uh...
It's perfect for our community. So I think what you're, what we're trying to say is, the maple, Big Tooth Maple, um, project, and Board of Directors, and the production of the syrup is still all of the private sector.
Yeah.
And just the event of the maple...
The festival, the day.
Festival day, then would be under the city umbrella of events.
Right.
So it would be more of that partnership where the city would take on all of that stuff, but you would still plan it under the direction of the city.
Yeah, and we would be happy to partner with the city there, and if we had a liaison from the city council, someone involved with Parks and Recreation, or, is that you, Janet?
Yeah, well, I used to be, but I'm over events, and it would fall over events.
Okay, okay.
City events.
Then, then, I think, partner, and, and, you know, clearing every, every aspect of it through the city.
I'm pretty sure you're not gonna keep Carrie away from it either.
Uh-huh.
So, so you might have a couple of liaisons, if that's okay with you.
Sure, no, no, I, I think that would, that would work out well, but again, the, the idea is that this, this happens at no additional cost to the city, and yet at the same time, I think it reflects well on the city, it aligns with the city's values, and, uh, with the community values, and promotes this sustainable, productive use of our, of our land, our local resources, so a lot of positives there that I think, uh, reflect and, and, and align well with, with what the city is all about.
Well, and also, you know, from the city, like, we, it's a wonderful event, and we appreciate it, and we want to, we wanna support it in any way we can, and this is one way that we could help with that.
Yeah.
That we could support it and make it a little bit easier for your committee.
Uh, Chris, what do you got?
I spoke with the county about two weeks ago regarding some of the city events, like the pancake breakfast, the Fire Department puts on, that kind of stuff. If it's run through the city, we do not need any kind of food handler's permit, so that, that's another benefit too, if that's been a challenge or not.
You won't have to get a food handler's permit if it's a city event.
We, we, we got it last year, I think it's $30, um, we're happy to do that, I mean, e- either way, if...
Well, I think this sounds great, um, I do think though that we, there will be a cost, right? I think the city is happy to incur those. I think probably more from an opportunity cost.
We already plan on, think, things like creating a banner for the mailbox.
For sure.
Last year, we, we, we can buy one or two banners for the mailboxes.
Oh, yeah.
And it'd be, be less than what we paid last year for signs, okay?
No, I think that's great, I'm just saying, you know, for the sheriff's service, you know, that's a cost, so it'd be more of an opportunity cost, 'cause we'd be allocating a certain number of hours of our contract.
But we're happy...
Oh, okay.
So, all I'm saying is, is we wanna make sure it is clear that there is a cost associated for the city to take on this event, but it is something that we would potentially be happy to do.
But we're not, you know, we're not like allocating a portion of the budget to help with it, right? Because we're trying to cover some of your costs, some things that we can cover.
But, but our intent is to do this at no out-of-pocket cost to the city.
Yep.
Yeah, no additional.
Does anyone have questions?
I have tons.
Sherry, you can come on up or use that mic there.
And then Doral has a bunch of questions, maybe Doral could go...
I'm, please, go ahead, Sherry.
Thanks, I just wanna ask if this is something, the presentation that Greg has made on behalf of our project, do we have to do this every year, or can we consider this to be a city event that will perpetuate through the years?
I think it's...
Perpetual.
It'll be perpetual unless we vote for it to not be.
Okay.
It'd be part of when we talk about events, or Janet does, concerning Woodland Hills Days, it would be either kicked out or retained, like we do with Woodland Hills Days, or the Fire Expo, or any of the city events.
Thanks.
I think the timing is very positive too, ha- having an event in, in, in April, when not much is happening, and, and then having, uh, Woodland Hills Days in September, which is, kind of brings the summer to an end.
Yeah, I just wanna preface a, a question or two with a comment. Um, since Greg Witt moved to our city, he has added many things that, uh, most of the citizens might not know, but he has really added some fine things, and this being a huge item as well, so, so, uh...
It's not like I planned this.
No, no, but, uh, with your career and your experience, I, I've seen so many great things added because of your efforts, and, and...
Well, thank you, it's been a question.
And I really support this, I think it's a great, a great thing to find out. I'm sad that I have a big old maple tree, or a few of them, that aren't tapped, so I feel left out.
I know, me too, I'm like...
It's probably got gallons, so I better get after it, right? No, thank you, Greg.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Brian or Mayor, do you guys have any additional questions?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, then we'll move to, to number two. Uh, preliminary plat, plat approval, um, Bellevue subdivision plat B, um, Chairman Franzen.
Let me give you a little bit of background on this. A number of years ago, uh, the city approved, uh, this subdivision, um, they, this is, by the way, this is Carol Bell and her husband, uh, they're the originators of this project. Steve McClary is online there, and he's going to, uh, uh, give you some detail on it, and I just wanna share some background so that you're familiar with it. They went ahead and, uh, the city approved the preliminary plat, they went ahead and did, uh, lots one and two under Phase A, and, uh, because of the, the timing and time period, uh, their preliminary plat expired. So, they're coming back to the city then to initiate a new preliminary plat for lots three through eight, uh, which is here tonight. Um, the, um, the planning commission has approved it, and recommends the council to approve it. Um, there was four conditions, so that you're aware of it, and there's a, there's a, 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 a single-page, uh, letter in your packet that indicates what these, uh, four conditions are, and, uh, you can read it there, but one is that, um, there's been some filter that has been used for, uh, the new Bel Cove Road, uh, kind of where it meets up with Valley, Valley View Way, and, uh, that fill was not, uh, done properly, wasn't documented, and so, um, there's going to be testing done on it, but, uh, most of it will be removed, and then will be replaced through a documented process according to our city ordinances, so that's one thing that, that we agreed that needs to be done, and added attention given to that. We also, on lot, um, six, as you will see there at the end of that cul-de-sac, there is a, uh, drainage easement. And, uh, in order to keep that easement, there was not enough room, uh, away from the property line to meet the city's 20-foot setback from property line for a driveway. So, uh, the Planning Commission approved a variance for them to set the driveway closer than 20-foot to the property line. Planning Commission, according to ordinance, has the authority to do that, so we've made that another, uh, call it a condition, if, if you will, that, that variance...
So that drainage right there coming up that, that cul-de-sac then will remain as it is?
It will remain as it is, correct, it won't be disturbed. Um, the other thing is, uh, the driveway on number three lot was inadvertently left off of the, uh, the plats. That will be corrected on the final plat, uh, that driveway will exit onto Valley View Way, but, uh, again, just so that you're aware of that, and, uh, the last lot...
So there'll be two driveways that exit onto Valley View, plus the main, the main...
Plus the other two, one and two, correct. And, uh, the last note is, due to the, um, the slope of these lots, um, the review done by the county for their septic systems, uh, several of these lots may very well require, uh, alternative septic systems. And, we want whoever the buyers are of these lots to be aware of that, and so we've asked that that note be included on the final plat, which, and all of these, they've, they've agreed to without any problem, so...
What would, what would be an example of an alternative septic?
There are more than our septic, some of them have their own, they may be pumping, uh, they may have an additional device that, uh, takes care of the gray water, um...
That's just a really more sophisticated system.
Yes, and more expensive as well, and this complies with the county.
And that's known upfront, when they, when they go to purchase these, that would be made known.
Correct. That will be notes on the, yeah, that'll be notes on the final plat that they'll include, so potential homebuyers will be aware, will be aware of that.
I hope it's also, I hate to say this, but I hope it's also whoever the agent is that's selling these lots, if it's gonna be on the MLS, there should be a special note on the, I'm just, I'm looking at the...
Yeah.
Yeah, there should be a special note on the MLS, because, um, a lot of agents don't know and understand plats, and they don't really look at them, so I'm just saying, it could be buyers' agents who don't look at it and, and don't inform their people, and then if that is the situation, they're gonna come and yell at the city, 'cause they're gonna be upset. So, um, as the owners, sellers, I think, if you can make a mental note, to make sure that whoever lists these for you, that they put that on the MLS, so that the buyers are aware, I think that's important.
Okay, thank you.
Wayne, could you also go over this, um...
Okay.
On this one here, this, this little paragraph right there for us?
Can we tell us which page you're on?
Uh, I think it's page three.
When, when the original preliminary plat was approved, there, it was recognized that there were issues with slopes on, on this property, and we had our LEI at the time, our city engineers, look at the, the whole plat, and, uh, there is an exemption in our development-construction standards where, if the slope is too great to be built on, our engineers can look and assess that, and make it a determination whether, uh, exceptions should be granted, uh, for building on these lots because of the slope. It's likely that, uh, and that pertains to where a slope is over 35%. Uh, some of those slopes, our ordinance says, the slope can't be disturbed if it's more than 35%. But our engineers looked at that and felt that disturbance could be had without creating further problems. So, that was granted to them in the preliminary plat, the first one, and that's being carried over to this plat as well. So they've been given an exemption for, um, to be able to go in and, and level or reduce some of these slopes, so that they're buildable areas, uh, on these lots, as approved by our, then, engineers, so be aware of that. And that's included on the plat, and that will be a note as well, so that individuals will be aware that, of, of that.
How big are one and two? Lots one and two, how big are they? Do you know?
I'm not sure, Steve, do you know off the top of your head, or Carol, you...
Yes, they're, they're over an acre, everything is just slightly over an acre, uh, over the acre mark.
Okay.
We don't call them one and two.
Oh, you don't, okay.
Uh-uh, so one and two sold off, and, um, now we're on to, uh, this one for Carol, and the mass grading, uh, Wayne is 100% correct, in that there was a myriad of reasons, uh, you can, if done grading correctly, you can actually shore up a hill, and s- some of how we're going down into the ravine, and we're doing, um, different aspects for that road, we wanna make sure that we're, uh, grading such that, twofold, we're reducing some of the fire concerns, and we're, we're grading at, in such a way that tactically, we're assuring up some of the, some of the hillside, as well as we are leveling out, um, and opening those up for building purposes as well.
For those of you who may not be aware per se, our, our engine, their plans for developing these lots will be monitored by our city engineers. Uh, there's certain points of inspection and things of that nature, so that happens during the course of development. And Jones and DeMeo will be looking at those sorts of things to make sure that there aren't problems being created by, by those kinds of exceptions, as well as to make sure that the lots are being developed according to our, uh, development-construction standards and our ordinances.
And, and as a side note to what Wayne said about the alternate in the septic, in the driveway, and the conditions, and stuff like that, uh, we're, we will be accommodating, and, and Ken had a funeral he had to attend to, but we've already accommodated a lot of these, um, uh, comments from the commission standpoint, and we will have them all, again, as Wayne's saying, uh... And we will have them all, again, as Wayne's saying, uh, on the final plat as we're, um, coming back to you guys for final plat approval.
Final question. So, um, with, because of the steepness of the slope and everything, did you say that the soil testing will take place prior to, um, the final plat? Or are we having, does every homeowner then, or lot, the person who purchases a lot before they build the home have to do all the soil testing?
This is for septic? You're talking, or just soil testing?
For stability of slope and, and all the things that will happen when it get, when building starts.
Yes. So I can talk to that Wayne. The, the county is going to require, let's go through both parts of it. The septic side, the county is going to require a secondary effort of what we already primary did to get a feasibility for subdivision plating purposes with you guys. So they police it really well. Um, and then you guys are policing us as well. And so there, for the septic side, they're going to have to, because they have to pre, uh, present, because we can't talk to where they're actually going to put the house, nor can we talk to the footprint of the house and the number of bedrooms, features, et cetera. Right? And so they have to make their drain field and their septic match up to the, to the orientation of both the building and the different, uh, uses within the confines of the construction, right? In the building. So that, that side of it will all be site planned, approved as well, um, through the county. And then also a, as part of the process for building and for permitting and inspection from the engineering side, we have code we have to abide by and they require different testing based on location of the house and, and different aspects. So all that will be processed as well.
Basically, there's two times that we require those. During the construction of public improvements, for example roadway.
Right.
There'll have to be a geotechnical report done then for the city. Then each lot owner is required also to.
Okay. That's what I was. Yeah, that's kind of what I was asking. And I also see then on the map, there's a little, I guess, building footprints around the numbers of the, of these lots. Is that, um, the buildable space, that, that's the dedicated buildable space? That because of slope, et cetera, that, uh, the property owner will be a half, have to build somewhere in that space?
Current.
It's not crazy.
Cause lots, yeah. Just wondering.
Currently, again, currently within the confines of the grade, that's your building footprint. As we go through the grading and the process of, of effort there, it could open those up.
Cause yeah, lot threes is tiny.
And a lot of that is because of the slope that is on the lot. And those could be adjusted as that is being developed.
Cause it would be mitigated for the homeowner if they put in retaining walls or other, other things as they decide what kind of home they're going to build.
They have to submit a plan again through your assist, through your building process. And you guys, uh, again, police us or police the, the building aspects that way as well.
Hey Steve, do you know, or anybody, is this slope map reflecting the current, uh, topography of the lots?
It is reflecting the current topo, topography.
So including the fill that's been placed there?
That, not including the field that's been placed.
Okay. So in the.
The fill, the field, if we went out and did a different, again, this is, uh, talking to why we did fill and, and stuff like that. But again, it has to be documented to Wayne's point and secure that we're using A1A type fill or secure non-collapsible good soil that meets the inspection requirements. Again, per, I'm not sure who was talking about the engineering process of going through with the city, but we're going to have to go through a process of them inspecting and doing GO and reporting and making sure that we're meeting the city code for what is a, a sure integratable roadway.
Much of this fill that was put in without city oversight will be removed and replaced as it goes forward.
Yeah, I see in condition one here, it says, you know, undocumented fill to the roadways can, can be removed from the public right-of-way and replaced? Or is that should be or will be? And does road, public right-of-way, is that the, the road that they're going to be building?
Yes.
Into it?
Yes.
Or basically all fill on the land?
Wherever fill was put in, it's like, it's going to have to be removed because it wasn't tested or reviewed as it went in. So that should be shall or will.
So not can, but shall.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and the reason we have currently a can scenario there is because per our conversations with, uh, the engineer and our engineer, if we can prove, I apologize. If we can prove that the documented or that the fill is, is representative per code of a integratable soil that matches up to the sieve numbers, et cetera, then, and the compactions meet, then at that point, we're fine. And I apologize, the reason I didn't show up in person is because I got a, a gombo going on for my kid. And so I didn't want to give you guys the gombo.
We appreciate that.
You want to use them?
Please. So in, in, in sure, basically there's, there's two ways to go about this. One is there are testing procedures that would have to, that they'd have to go through to prove and document that this meets A1A classification and has been compacted to the proper compaction. Now that's not just, that has to be the complete depth of the fill. So that's one way of doing is going through the testing methods. The second way is for remove it and replace it with, and be inspected by the city that it is A1A and compacted to meet those requirements. So I would suggest the note should probably read that the fill material will be tested and can either be tested and, um, I don't know how to work, we'll think about it, but basically be tested, um, to meet the city standards and codes. And if not, then will be replaced, removed and replaced to meet city codes and standards. So that's the two options. Either test it and prove it or you, and, and one thing I did talk to Steve about is, is just a, 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 a letter stating that it does wouldn't suffice. We'd have, actually have test results from a, from a, from a geotechnical testing agency.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, my other question is per, uh, number three. Uh, lot number three, um, driveway may exist at the Valley View Way and it shall be shut. Oh, nope. I'm reading the wrong one. Sorry. It's the one with the exception. So lot six. For that drainage easement, is there going to be any further installation during the development phase of this to ensure that that drainage doesn't create erosion that would actually eat away that driveway since it is in such proximity? Will there be a, a culvert installed there to capture drain water at the top of the lot and take it through? Or will it just be, you know, rock line ditch? Or will it just be as it currently is?
And that will come from an engineer's review during the development process to make sure that that drainage is left in place and it is not adversely impacting a driveway entrance to the lot.
And, and also just in commentary here, we can do a, a simple lot line adjustment because these have to meet per zone, um, one acre minimum. And if you look at lot six, you're going to see it's 1.33. So we have some room talking to our engineer where we could adjust that lot line and squeeze it and, uh, in such that you have actual more space there to accommodate as well. So that was part of our, uh, conversation in accommodating. And we were going to make those adjustments again to make sure we meet all the conditions and all the code and all the engineering requirements, both in the, the, the entitlement as well as development process and then on into the building, uh, of itself. Because the, the building, um, builder could propose something as well that could adjust that ultimately. But, um, again, we have to live up to the code and the standards per what Wayne's saying. And what your code says, right?
Thank you, Steve.
There was also attachment to your handout, the review done by Jones and DeMille. With, uh, this has been back and forth a couple of times between our Jones and DeMille reviewers and.
Ken Berg.
Ken Berg, who is the engineer. And that comment is, those comments and back and forth are in that spreadsheet that's, uh, attached there to your, to your.
Packet.
Packet.
Um, looking, I apologize. I have a lot of questions. Unfortunately, I know just enough engineering to be dangerous. I apologize. So as I'm looking at this on map two, on the topo, um, up by the entrance from Bel Cove into Valley View Way, I am seeing an elevation of around 5580, if my eyes will focus. And then if I'm going down, I'm assuming this Bel Cove is, is kind of downhill into the cul-de-sac. Because my next topo line there is like 5610. So is there, if we've got a natural drainage through lot six, is there some sort of basin or some way to capture all that water? Or are we creating a, a swamp there in the cul-de-sac? I'm assuming this is another, it'll be engineered, but.
Yes. Go ahead Wayne or engineer. I'll answer after you guys. Yes, that's what I was going to mention. So we're pushing the, we're pushing it all into the infrastructure and we're designing and engineering the infrastructure to, um, evaluate the drainage and the, the volume. The engineer, uh, Jones and DeMille required us to do a full study on all that. And we've added sumps to accommodate that, to facilitate the, that the infrastructure will be able to handle it.
So there's two, two ways to do that Ben, just to, generally what, what you do is the developers are usually required to handle any additional drainage they create through their development, right? Through hardscaping, basically roads and curb and gutter. And that's where sumps will come in and cap, should capture all that. Now the drainage can either be captured in some sort of sumps detention or something like that, or they can culvert it and pass it through. So historic flows can be piped basically through the development and out the other side of the drainage, as long as it doesn't take any additional created by the, by the development. And those, I, I think we're planning to be handled through some. So that's typically how, uh, in you, when you get to the final engineering, those sorts of details are worked out.
Wonderful. Thank you. Does anybody else have any?
Those are great questions. Those are all really good questions. They're really good. And so you are being dangerous and smart at the same time.
Well, and now you're just lying to me, but I appreciate it, Steve.
I'm telling you the truth. No, I mean, I don't, I'm not bluffing here. Those are great questions.
Adora, what do you got?
They are.
And I see in the plans hydrants, but are, is there a, do we know where they'll be at this time or does that come later?
So that usually comes during the final design, uh, the final plat. So when they get the final designs, when they'll start designing the infrastructure, the water lines and the hydrants and stuff like that.
But, uh, does one hydrant along that road you see or is there? It's about a 400-foot Bel Cove length, right? They added three, two of 366.
I only have screenshots.
So likely it'd be one at the end of the cul-de-sac could be required and probably one at the start of the cul-de-sac. About 400 feet apart is usually what we ask for, so.
The code, the code's calling, gonna call that out and we have to again meet, meet your, your code and standards.
Okay, I just have one last question if that's okay. More annoyance from, from me. As I look at these lots, I think my largest concern is, is the septics. And it's not necessarily to everything you've already talked about, but more just the feasibility of actually installing. Now I know excavators can work wonders and they can climb steep mountains, um, in a single bound. But I'm just wondering, because you know, a standard septic in Woodland Hills costs somewhere around 20,000 to 30,000 on a normal difficulty of a lot install. These ones, to me, just on my rough estimate, would be significantly more expensive than that. Um, I know we're going to have in the plats marked and allocated. And even as Janet has articulated, potentially even on the, the cell, um, that there will be an additional, you know, septic cost. But I mostly, I look at like lot number six with those septic fields way, way high up above the house. Um, you're not only going to be pumping everything up, you may have, you know, the sanitation point there, but just transporting the, the needed six to eight dump truck loads of gravel up that hill. Is there any way we'd be able to articulate this, um, for a potential buyers? Just so that they know what they're getting into instead of feeling like they were, you know?
Ability to pump it in the five years after they put it in to make sure that.
That's another factor.
Because it is this, the slope stability and everything else that's there. Um, that's something I think that needs to be thought of coming into it, just so that it's reality for people who buy the lot.
Again, one of the, if I can comment, one of the things that's gonna, is gonna happen here is again, the builder themselves, when they're site planning and they're planning out their, their home, they have to run the review through the process with the, um, with.
How do you help?
Health department. And then you also have to, um, run the process through your engineering. And so I, I think you're, you have layers of safeguarding within the process of, of those guys making sure that they're where, they're keenly aware. As far as, uh, on the MLS, we, it, 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 it requires a comment anyways that states, uh, septic or alternate septic or whatever it is that, you know, a, again, in conversation. And if I'm Carol or if I'm me or a developer or whatever, I'm also wanting to, um, allow people to understand what it is they're buying. Nobody wants a, a gotcha, we didn't know later on down the road. So we're, I think that there's plenty of policing within the process. Most of the time the buyers, when they, they, they come in, they come in and they say, hey, we want X amount of time and due diligence, not to talk even to what lenders are requiring in understanding the lot and it, and the buildable, uh, capacity of the lot. So you have multiple layers of security here that will talk through the process of, okay, are we buying something that we can build on?
Yeah, I think.
Thank you.
Thanks Steve. I appreciate that. I think that one of the reasons that we're asking so much is that we do have people who come here who have had a house in, in the Flat Valley and they haven't had, um, slope development before. And our ordinances to accommodate that are different. And some builders have not yet had the ability to really understand what that means. And they get upset when we say, I'm so sorry, but you can't do that, right? Because of the limitations on the property itself. I mean, even if, whether it's the septic on the backside and how do we get there to, um, is the driveway, you know? Does it meet the, because of slope, um, of the property itself, will the driveways be in, in, conform to our, 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 you know, what the, the steepness of driveways can be? You know, we have limits on those. And so we don't want to, for, for those, when we approve these, we're saying that they are buildable lots and that this can happen. We, at this point, are recognizing that those who purchase these lots can do it, but it will cost more. And I think that's one of the things that we want to make sure that those who come to buy these lots, when they come before the planning commission or before us and say, we bought, this is our dream lot and now we can't do it. Because, and not because of us, but just because of, of the property itself.
We do have those situations.
And so we just want to make sure that it's on record that, that, that these, um, not that they are hazards, but they are, um.
Harder.
They are harder, that these things are, are, these challenges are known upfront to, as we approve these, that those challenges are known prior to the purchase of the property so that we're not the ones that have to say, you know, you, you should have known.
So, so from the, that side of it, you guys are a hundred percent correct in that, you know, they gotta be able to figure out whether or not it can pencil, right? And whether or not they can financially. And whether or not they can financially afford. It's doable, but whether or not they can financially afford. And the problem we have in this development industry and building industry is the, the way to know that is to orient and architect and design and, and sit down with the city and, and go for permits and different things like that. The, I mean, we could lace it with as much vernacular of warning, but people, when they have an interest and they see the shiny object, sometimes, you know, they want more than they can chew. I mean, that's just society as a whole, right? And so we're, we're comfortable in the, you know, articulation and stuff like that. I've been, but I, I mean, on the flip side, just as a side note, in Eagle Mountain, we did one acre lots and we laced this one lot with, you know, commentary of alternate, alternate septic, the whole bit. And then they found a conventional way to do it, right? So on the building side, the builder and them were able to figure out an orientation that, you know, and that was through the process. So we're good, we're totally comfortable with, you know, saying alternate systems and, and, you know, all that stuff and letting them know. But I can't, I, I don't know if I'll ever get to a point where I can guarantee, or anybody can guarantee, that when they get into the process of trying to orient the building of their dream, if they want to put the White House on that, that lot and, and stuff, that they're gonna be able to make it work and they want 20 bedrooms and two butlers and, you know, I, 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 I would love, I would love to be able to satisfy that, but I can't satisfy that either, is I guess what I'm saying. But we're good with, we're good with the process of articulating alternate, septic systems are more expensive to whatever within the MLS stuff, but I don't know how to surefire that when they start orienting it, that it's a guarantee now that they're gonna be able to get it even.
You have to speak in the mic.
Thank you Steve.
It took us like a year and a half to get through the county because they really did fine tooth comb it. So our engineer was saying that if any of your septic tanks fail or your fields fail, you'll be doing the same thing because the county has upped what they're requiring. So one of the problems are on approved lots that are already here, this might be why you're having that problem, is they haven't really gone through that. So it's an approved lot, the person can buy it, but then, and it had a septic approval 40 years ago maybe. And so then it, it gets really hard because they haven't had the county come through and do what they did to us. It took a year and a half, as Wayne was saying, we took a long time getting through the process, so.
Thank you for doing that and thank you for humoring, especially all my ridiculous questions.
No, it's not ridiculous.
Does anybody else have any questions?
And our engineers are okay with what, what's going forward.
They've, they've moved through it and, and indeed, that's what I'm reading as well. So thank you so much. Okay, then we'll move to number three. Wayne, you might as well just hang out with us there. A proposal to record ordinance 2022-25 with Utah County Recorder's Office advising property owners identified in the August 16th, 2022 hazard overview map, the requirement of conduct of natural hazards study. Chairman Francis, please, yeah.
We will.
We will.
This is just our obsession.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So we talk about everything and then we vote on everything.
Okay, so how long should we wait?
I, I don't think.
An hour maybe, maybe?
Yeah. If that.
You can leave and we'll let you know if you want.
That was the long agenda item.
Wayne, are these all vacant lots that are to be built?
They are.
Cause I looked a couple of them up on the county, that's what I was doing.
No, they're not.
Well.
And they're supposed to be.
One, I, I looked at the ones up on Eagles Nest and one had a house on it, at least on Utah County, and one was a vacant one.
Which one, do you remember?
Yeah, I think 40, I can do it again. 315, let me find that again.
I'm just wondering if it was a mistake.
That was the design of it, that these are all vacant lots with no homes on them now.
Okay, okay, and that makes me feel better, okay.
So, and if, if there's an error there, Joey went through and listed the.
Either 35 or 40 had a house.
Okay, let me go look.
Okay, thank you.
This is something the city should have done some time ago.
And I thought we had, and that's why I was surprised to see it and I was like, I thought we did that.
We didn't assign it to each lot. We did put a list together of when the ordinance was passed for the requirement, but that stayed with the ordinance. What we're proposing here now is that we update that list, it's a couple of years old, but including only parcel numbers for those vacant lots, of only those homes that are in the danger area, so to speak, the hazard, natural hazard area. So it's not every lot in the city, it's just those that are in the natural hazard area as identified by the engineers who've done that study.
There, there is a mistake. 53, 315, 0040 does have a home on it.
And I didn't check all of them, I just ran into those.
I'm gonna, I, yeah, so it's on that first column midway.
There may be others, you know.
Okay, and we can certainly double, double check that.
Basically, this is just to say, we're putting this on the plat so that they know that we've identified that.
We're putting it, it's not, it's not going on the plat.
Oh.
It will be a, a letter filed with the county.
Okay.
Relative to that parcel number.
Okay, relative to that parcel number.
So puts them on notice.
So it recognizes that when they purchase, if they purchase that property, they will be doing a hazard study prior to building.
Correct.
Okay. It shows up on the title report.
Right.
Now, say that again Kerry, if they purchase that property, somebody's purchased these properties already.
Right, but if it's for sale or whatever, then that will.
Oh, so.
It's a to build.
To build.
If somebody owns a property, if they own it now.
This is, this is the challenge I had, feeling good about this when we talked about it years ago. I don't feel good about passing some change that changes the value of someone's purchase. If, if I buy a lot in the city and then we all at once change the rules that we're forcing them to do a hazard, whatever, expensive, they're not cheap, right? Then I've inflicted cost to them that they didn't know about when they bought it to, to begin with.
It's possible, but that's what our city ordinance does.
Yeah, but I, I voted against it last time, I know, but, but I, I won't.
So they're, we're not changing anything from the work that was done back when. There is an ordinance passed.
We hum-hawed around and the city decided to do a global hazard assessment for the whole area, you know, and we had some sort of thing that you.
And we changed that.
You now have, have pointed out to individual properties, but I could support it if that property came up for sale. Then I'm okay with them doing a hazard study before the house is built.
Then we need to go back and change an ordinance.
But I.
We already passed the ordinance.
If that's the case, cause that ordinance is in place.
But what, what, what is this change then doing if that's already an ordinance?
It's to put the person on notice if there is an exchange sale that goes through the county. But that doesn't change the fact, if somebody owns a piece of property and wants to build on it, they still, and they're in the hazard area, they still have to provide the city a hazard study.
And y'all think that was fair to add that bill to everyone that owned property already? I don't. I think they should have known that before they bought the lot.
Safety issue.
Well, it's, the church is built on a fault line, come on. There's, there's dangers everywhere, but you won't see other cities change the, change the, the, the value of someone's purchase on a lot. I know Provo's not gonna do this for the fault line that goes above Provo or other cities aren't gonna, I, I just can't see that being fair to our citizens.
I guess one of the questions is, is what, what does a natural or a natural hazard study cost?
Depends on what.
For what we require. So for example, this lot that Matt Nelson built in Eagle Nest, he had to do a fault line study. Basically, they came in, it probably cost three, four, $5,000. They take a really deep pen, trench through the lot, just look for any kind of operation of the, try to scurry in there and see if they're on, see if they're actually on a fault line. Cause if they are on a fault line, changes the way you design the house.
Add it's more expensive?
It, it adds probably three to $5,000, the cost of building a house. It's kind of like, they have to do geotech, geotech report when they build a house, it's kind of the extension of a geotech report, it's added on to it. You just go, so when you do a geotech study, you take an excavator out there and you dig down whatever, seven feet, test the soils, and you add a hazard study to it like a seismic study, you might go fifteen feet across the lock, cause you're looking for a fault line on the lock. You don't find one, great, good to go, if you find one, then it changes the way you spend your time, then you're adding more earthquake protection to the house.
Which ultimately could save you money in the long run.
So.
It's added cost.
Yeah. I probably need to add earthquake back on then, since I'm in the zone, right?
Yeah, and you know, we've done a few of these republics, so these have known for some of these hazard studies.
Right there.
It does add cost to the lot, it can be a surprise if a lot, bought a lot and then all of a sudden they're required to do a study after, you know, after they bought the lot not knowing they were in that area. Kind of one of those, you know, I don't know, it's extra protection for them, but if they find nothing, then they just spend the money.
But if they sell their house and that's thermal, you have no idea that they were on.
If the house is already built, this does not pertain to them.
And I think this ordinance is already in place, we already have a house.
It should be when the lot was formed, I mean, that.
Ideally, yes.
We're too late, we're too late.
That was so long.
See, now, now you're putting the city, in my view, the city is in a precarious position, we're making someone spend money to do something different than they want to do. And if they have, if we have an earthquake and it fails, we're liable, in my opinion.
And if they.
The city is somewhat liable.
If we put a buildable lot out there for them and they, we don't tell them that there's an earthquake.
Well, we send them a letter, I'm all for that.
Well, but if we don't, if we don't notify them at all.
Yeah.
Then, then they come back to the city and, and we've had a little bit of that.
I love.
Come back to the city and say, hey, you didn't tell me about that.
I love the notification idea, I'm all over that, but that's where I'd drop it.
And I can understand your, your point, but we'll need to change an ordinance if you want to redo that. But that's, our ordinance is in place now and allows for that. We're just making one additional note of notification with the county to let.
You're, you're tying it up, you're tying up that loose end that they might still have to not have to do a hazard thing.
There's quite a few.
So they, they have to do a hazard regardless according to our ordinance.
And what do you do if they don't?
We don't, give them a building permit.
And there's quite a few cities that are now doing this, the county is requiring it on all county property and quite a few cities who are bench cities are starting to do it, especially because.
Do you have any contacts I could ask about this?
Yeah, I can look at it, I can ask about them, but I know, great, I talked to the, the mayor of Draper recently after they had those two, two things.
Right, right.
I asked them, are you doing hazard studies? And he said, yes, we are, we're requiring it now because of the same type of thing, depending on which part of the city, there could be an issue. Now, when the city approved those lots in Draper, that all the engineering was there, everything was fine. So they said yes, and then a few years later, they have an incident, right? And so, so what cities are trying to do now is to mitigate that, is to, is to let the homeowners know this could be a, the property owners know this could be a possible hazard. Now, if you want to build, then you and your builder figure out how to mitigate that hazard.
That's a great example, Janet, if, if the way that happened in Draper, I don't think it was the city's fault, I think it was the engineering's fault.
It was bad engineering because.
So, so why would the city want to jump in the middle of that?
Well.
Had they jumped into it beforehand, if they jumped in beforehand and that happened, they'd have been liable.
Can I come at it from another angle?
Yeah.
If I own the property and I want to build my dream home on it, I'm doing a hazard study and I want someone to tell me that I need one.
Really? You're not an adult, you don't want to do it yourself? Spend your own money and not us make you?
I, I want a hazard study, I want one.
You're smart, I would too, I would too.
I want somebody to tell me that I need one, because you know what, when people are, when the people are going through the process and they're buying and they're doing all this and it's overwhelming and they have a builder and they have to make a million decisions, if somebody just comes and says, hey, by the way, it's in a hazard zone, that's probably gonna go one ear in, one ear out the other. But if somebody tells me I have to have a hazard study done, then I'm gonna do it and I want to do it. If I'm investing all of my money and my life savings in building a house, I want a hazard study. I'm just saying.
I think you might have a lawsuit in the future. It's like me suing the city, cause I don't like to shovel snow after I live, after I moved here. I know what I'm, what I'm living on, you know, it's not a flat, I mean, it's just different here.
By the way, I didn't.
Can I ask a question? Wayne, can I ask a question about the origin of our ordinance? Was it in response to the avalanches? Is that when that ordinance was initially passed? I mean, because the way I see it, Adora, and I think your point is fair, but the way I see it is that, like, we became aware of potentially some hazardous conditions that we weren't aware of before. And so, I don't, and, 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 you know, now, I mean, I, I, I can certainly see your point, you know, but we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't because if we, if we sit back and say nothing, being aware that there is a hazard and then a subsequent property owner comes along, and I know that you address that in, in saying that it should be when the property's for sale or if it's for sale. But I, I, I mean, this, this is, in my mind, this is something that came up because conditions changed. We became aware of something that we weren't aware of before. Is that a fair assessment of that or a fair statement, Wayne?
Yes, yes, it is. Yeah, these were passed after the.
Really? You think this mountain changed? Nothing changed.
No, but people wouldn't know.
Information changed.
We didn't even have a study done of the whole city, so we didn't know.
Right.
And then that, that prompted a study to be done to help protect people. Probably I'd say, I don't know, 60% will occur through a sale when a person goes to the county and sees this document filed against that particular, or a warning kinda, against that property. They can still, they, they can't disregard it because we won't give a building permit without the study done if one is required. So that, that's a safeguard, but we don't want somebody to be surprised and say, I just bought this property and I had no idea it was sitting on a fault line, you know? And now I want a, a building permit and you're not gonna give me one.
I didn't know mine was that, I didn't know mine was that close. It's okay.
Maybe, can I give you a different?
You should do a hazard study right now.
Perspective, it's too late, no. So, one thing that I, and I didn't want to say anything, but I will. There is an element of, there's the home builder, okay? The, the owner, they're eventually gonna move in. And there's typically, most of the time, a general contractor, right? And then there's the city and there's an integration between the three to construct a home. Sometimes there are fights and disagreements between generals and homeowners around how something should be constructed.
I've seen that.
And far too often, that is a consequence of dollar signs, right? There is cheap ways to do things because I want that crystal chandelier and so I don't want to spend my money on dirt, I want to spend it on the crystal chandelier. I guess I used a bad example because now I'm talking about rocks. But, okay? This would actually be a great help. Now, this meaning what our currently ordinance already makes us do, right? So there's nothing changing here except for a flagging process. But if there is a process by which a general has the ability to go to homeowner and say, hey, this is the, where your, your lot is, or a geotechnical engineer or an engineer from the, the architectural side, they now have to say, okay, we have to do this, this is part of, of the reasons, if you want to build in Woodland Hills, this is what has to happen on this particular lot. And it creates a way to pull emotion out of the transaction for the safety of the homeowner. If we have an event that triggers anything on this map, especially with who we're sending into those homes if there is a catastrophic event, I would much rather prefer our safety people, you and your friends, to be more safe by entering homes we know are built correctly versus somebody who opted to not spend the money to get the testing they needed to make sure their home was engineered correctly. Versus somebody who opted to not spend the money to get the testing they needed to make sure their home was engineered correctly. Which created a, a scarier environment for you guys to enter that home at the point of emergency. I feel this protects the city far more, it protects the general far more, and it mostly it protects the person sleeping in that room.
I personalize it more than you're doing. I know how I would feel if I had bought my lot and five years later I go to build. And I, I learn about this surprise. This is a surprise. This isn't anything I knew about. I might have done it anyway, but now you're giving me no choice.
But I think that's why the ordinance.
And I want you to do that when I bought my lot, not after.
True, but I think that's what the, why the ordinance was passed to require that. If the city didn't take any steps at all to inform you that you're sitting on a fault line, you're going to build a house. And if there's a major earthquake, it's gone. Wouldn't you rather know that before and take, be able to take steps then to mitigate that before anything happened rather than not knowing?
I want that to be my responsibility and not some government city do, tell me that. That's the way I feel about it.
Ben brought up a good point that we're remembering. When I bought my house or bought my property, we didn't require, um, um, fire suppression systems in the house. The city council voted to make that a new ordinance and every home after that had to put in fire suppression, which was quite an expense. Now, some people were saying, I mean, you could argue the same thing that you're saying now is I bought my lot, I didn't know when I built that I had to do that. But at that time, that was important for our city for fire mitigation and now nobody even thinks twice about it. Every home that comes gets fire suppression and that's because a council voted to say, we want our residents' homes to be safer for them and for the community as a whole. And I think it's the same type of, same type of thing that we're asking and we're, we're putting out there is how can we help our citizens be responsible for their own safety and choose to mitigate if they want to?
Perfect example. If I built a home in Provo today, I know what sprinklers do for people. I would put them in. I would put them in and you don't have to tell me to do that because I'm educated about sprinkler. But I'm educated, you can be educated about sprinklers too. There's, that's a no brainer. But, so I don't need to be told, you know, that, I'm not, you're not going to change my mind about this. I voted against it last time, so. But for good reasons.
That parcel number is supposed to be zero, zero, three, zero instead of zero, zero, four, zero. I looked at that.
And, wire on that Janet, I think we need to check every one of them.
And we will. We'll double check.
Okay, okay.
Before we do that.
But I just found a vacant one that was close to that one and it wasn't on the list.
Okay.
And I know which lot it is, so.
And you better do the city on lots too.
We, we've got a home.
If anything's ever done there, those are trouble.
It's been brought to our attention that in the last six months, a home was sold here in the city. And the people who owned the home, there were some problems with it and they never disclosed that to the new owners. And the city wasn't in a position, it's things that the city wouldn't have known and didn't know. And they came to us not, not complaining, but just letting us know that the prior homeowner didn't tell them about these things. So this is just one more step in trying to keep homeowners apprised of, you know, what they may be facing.
Thanks for hearing me out, that's all.
No, no, I, I understand.
I'm laughing because I, yeah, with a notorious family, wasn't it?
I, I love your, I love your thoughts. I love.
So, anyway, that's, that's the idea behind what we're proposing to do, so.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Oh, Sheri.
Does this in any way make it more difficult for somebody to sell their home? I mean, the idea of seller disclosure, I have to disclose information. Um, just like, I think it's the bells here, when, when they are trying to sell their lot, that would have to be disclosed that there's difficulty. So it's up to the seller. I'm wondering, is it up to the city because you may make it harder for people to sell their existing lots? Or, in my case, my home's already built. I'm not on the list, but I'm on a fault line.
I, I don't want to be a devil's.
No.
Or a Doral's advocate here.
I'm not trying to be either.
You can be, come on, come on.
But, uh, something in Sheri, in your comments, it's, uh, something to be aware of is homeowner's insurance is getting harder. We've had residents up here whose homeowners policies have been canceled.
Yep.
And, um, if they have a hazard study and are found, I mean, I'm just saying it's going to be harder also. There's going to be another expense because it's going to be harder and more expensive to get homeowner's insurance. I already, mine went up, I, I told this last time, but mine went up sixty percent from one, in one year, so.
Let, let me add kind of a little bit of the flip side. I'm trying to sell my home. Guess what? When I built it, I, you know, I was on a fault, but I had that mitigated. So now I'm trying to sell the home and I can tell them that, that fault issue has been mitigated according to engineer studies. So it's much safer to, to ha, to.
The thing is though, whether they do the study or not, the conditions are the same.
Right.
It doesn't change anything.
The conditions aren't changing.
And that's part of the benefit and curse of, of living where we live.
Yeah.
Is we all rolled those dice. We knew we were living in a fire dangerous area. We knew we were living in a, you know, when the earthquake hits, we're on a silt bed. No, it's the, it's the house below us because we're just going to slide, right Ted? We're just going to slide down the mountain, right? Our houses will be intact. It'll be like a.
We're just gonna.
We're going to crumble down the mountain. Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Yeah.
Please.
Um, I just think it's really important that city staff do not comment on people's property, that they turn that over to you need to talk to your contractor, you need to, um, you know, this lot, like she's saying. If somebody called about her lot and said, we want to buy this house and then somebody in the city staff started saying, oh, well, that's a hazardous area or that's an earthquake fault. That's not really fair because like in Wayne's, um, he's already mitigated that. But somebody, so I'm only bringing this up because when I was selling one of those two lots, um, it's, it was a, a different shape that was buildable area. It still was seventeen thousand square feet of buildable area. But somebody in the city told them, oh, you'll, you'll have a really hard time building on that. And I'm, I, and the buyer called me and said, well, what do you think? And I said, well, are you building a seventeen thousand on one floor, you know, home? Because then you, you know, that's, that's where your building envelope is. So I just feel like the city staff needs, they're not the engineers, you know, so that you need to just tell everybody, check with an engineer. Check with your contractor and get together with the engineer and the contractor, you know?
Thank you. Great comment. We'll take that back. Okay, let's move to number four. Unless, did you want to say something there?
No, no thanks, Ben.
Number four, so resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, appointing individuals to serve at the Park Trails and Recreation Committee, um, Councilmember Hutchings.
Okay, so yeah, this is, this is with help from, from Councilmember Lent. Um, so Sheri Berger and Michelle Crump agreed to continue on the, uh, the Park Trails and Recs Committee. Um, but we did have one member who, who felt that, that they needed to, to end their, their time with us. And so with Councilmember Lent's, uh, recommendation, I reached out to Judy Pickle, Pickle. And she's agreed to, uh, to, uh, join the committee. And so that's who I am recommending, uh, that, that the council, uh, approve for the committee this year.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions?
Sheri gave the thumbs up, so that's good.
Wonderful. Okay, then we'll just keep clipping along. Wonderful. Number five, so follow up on tabled ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four, proposal to amend city code ten dash eight dash two B. Uh, permitting building uses and omitting ten dash eight dash, uh, two B, uh, three. Um, Councilmember Malkovich, any update there?
Yeah, I, I would like to continue to table it. I brought it to the league attorneys and talked to them about this wording. And, um, we don't want to find ourselves in the middle of a loophole between when we finally pass something. And there's some legislation that's happening right now that could impact this. So legislation, uh, legislative session is March first and so then I can revisit with them and make sure that there is nothing, um, that or if there would be wording that we should use that would be, uh, more appropriate for us so that we don't find ourselves with people finding the holes.
For sure. Thank you. Okay, um, number six, large purchase requests or sales of surplus equipment, um, Chris and Ted.
And a little bit of Janet.
And a little bit of Janet.
Are you going to start out, Janet?
Um, I can start out, just the finance committee we met this last week, uh, last Wednesday. And Ted came and gave an excellent presentation, talked to us, um, and all, the finance committee supports what Ted is trying to do.
Thanks, yeah. I have my finest dress on and, and we presented to the, to the finance committee and they, I think, supported it. So I'll just give a quick discussion and then Chris can correct me where, in places I go wrong. Um, we, we talked about the, the sale of some of our equipment and this has come about with, one, just stuff we're not using anymore. Two, stuff that's getting old and just running out of space to keep all of our equipment and it's breaking apart. So we're talking about, um, three phases, basically. Um, I, I've, as I've kind of thought through this, I thought, well, maybe we break this down into three phases. We presented to the finance committee, I'll, I'll say kind of phases one and two. And I think they, they agreed or approved to move forward with phase one. And then we need some more information for phase two. So phase one is basically the sale of Corbett's truck because we just don't use it anymore. Sitting there getting weathered. Sooner we can get rid of that, the better. Um, and then we talked about also getting rid or selling the maroon truck. Um, that truck is used part-time by Zach to, he takes, he sets meters for us, does blue staking, does some well testing for me, stuff like that. Um, but it's getting old, breaking down. So to sell those two vehicles right away. With that, we would then, um, take the truck I currently drive and turn that into a public works work truck or the new maroon truck. So to speak, one Zach could use to still do blue staking and what he does and then get a new.
What year is that truck? I forgot.
Twenty thirteen.
So it's an old truck.
So it's getting, it's getting old and then we'll, we'll talk phase two here in a minute, so. Um, so we.
Saving me off?
Yeah, for, for now, turn that into a public works work truck. So we still have one that's a little better shape to do public works stuff in. Uh, and then we get a new public works slash fire chief truck. Um, that would then be phase one.
Which is what we're voting on today.
Which is what we would vote on today.
But make sure Corbett's truck is owned free and clear. And what did, Chris, what did you say we would get for it? You booked it out last.
Yeah, we would get between, just under sixty.
Yeah, so.
It's held its value very well, hasn't it?
Well, it's a diesel, it's a long bed, it's a lariat, it's, you know, and we got it. Uh, I'd have to go back and look at the price, but we bought it for pretty much what we could sell it for.
I need to make a Facebook post about that.
Yeah.
She's thinking the same thing. I'm thinking.
Yeah. Let me, I can get you the for sure numbers on that before, but it's, it's, I bet it's within ten thousand dollars.
You know what would be awesome if we could make a post that said, we just made a thousand dollars off of Corbett's truck? When we sold it.
And used it for these years.
Yep.
That would sound funny.
And then, oh, you're right. And then I think the discussion we had with, um, the new truck would be to lease it rather than purchase it. Um, just because that works out better and Chris can explain all the, the reasons behind that.
We'd have a service contract was one of the biggest things.
Service contract with it. I think it just works out better on the books and.
Less cash outlay.
Yeah, cut it. Um, and then that would be phase one. Phase two, we're talking about some of the equipment that we would, we would potentially sell. But to do that, I'm working on getting some additional costs. We've got the old Kubota that sits up there and I was up there today and looked at it and it's pretty rundown. Um, we've got the, uh, we've got a skid steer down at the salt shed. We've got the service truck down here, the white service truck that's really old and, 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 and just is, is getting to a point where it's in need of repair all the time. Um, so in phase two, and this is kind of coming from our snowplow drivers as well, some of their preferences, would be that maybe we get rid of the service truck. Um, possibly the gray truck that would be our temporary public works work truck. And then kind of look for a new service type truck. Um, we get rid of the, that could be used by Zach and be more set up for service. Um, we'd also get rid of the Kubota. Um, and then we would look for like a new rubber tired backhoe with a. Well, and that's possible, the skid steer. We had some discussions about that the other day. That's still a little bit on the table.
Okay.
Just because of. We're going to have to talk about personnel first. Do we, do we put our snowplow drivers in a big backhoe to load salt or do we keep them in the skid steer? So that's some of the discussions going on.
So the Kubota and the white service truck for sure are on the sale, on phase two sale. Skid steer has a question mark depending on some things coming up, but possibly then a new service truck, buying a new service truck, releasing and a, and a backhoe.
And today, phase two is not on the table.
Right. I'm just.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm working on getting some pricing on a rubber tired backhoe and it would come out with a snowplow attachment. That could be used to help widen our roads, clean cul-de-sacs or sorry, snow blower attachment, stuff like that. Uh, and then we could also use it just as a general backhoe, have a bucket, we could haul stuff and just a general public works.
And we already approved the orange truck, so that's going as well.
Yeah, so the orange truck is going.
Would that be considered phase one, the orange truck or is that even?
That was already done. That's, that's, that's pre-phase. That one's already up.
Yeah.
Is, is approved to sell. It's not up yet.
Uh, Brian, did you have something?
Yeah, the skid steer is on a lease and I believe that comes up, uh, about June if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
So just understand that that is not a sale. That will be just turning in, turning in that lease.
Yeah, right.
And I, and I think budget wise, it's either or. I don't think we can do both unless we want to take another ten or twelve thousand a year out for a backhoe. And then another thousand or ten thousand a year for the skid steer.
Yeah.
Has to be either.
So, so those are what we're, so that's kind of phase two we're talking about, but we need to put together some numbers first and get some equipment costs for, if we replace it with a rubber tire backhoe. Um, one, I think this helps us get, the goal is to get better equipment so we're not maintaining the equipment all the time and fixing it. And two, trying to combine multi-use vehicles and downsize a little bit because we've got so many vehicles, we just don't have places for them all.
Places and maintenance on them all.
Places and maintenance and then, and then a phase three down the road could be possibly looking at what we do with like the back truck or something like that. But that's a little ways down the road yet, so. So phase one is the one we talked about today and then phase two, we'll work on some numbers and maybe in the next three to four months, come back with a phase two option.
We talked about it quite a bit. Finance committee supports phase one.
I don't know, anything to add, Chris?
Um, no, just, uh, yeah, they support phase one. I, I think they were okay with a, a phase two because we, we didn't have the phase one, phase two approach when we discussed it with them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But getting, uh, getting, that skid steer, I think we're on five or six years. It, it's time that it probably needs to go before we have too much more break on it.
For phase two, I think the biggest concern was just that we don't want to sell everything if there's supply shortages like we've seen with our snowplows and delays. We don't want to pre, we don't want to sell them prematurely and then be left with nothing. That was our biggest concern.
Right, right. So I'm working on.
I'd probably look at, I'd be looking at that, that backhoe sooner than later because it's, the lease is up July. We're going to want to get something in the works, get the council to approve it. Um, it is on state contracts. We don't have to go to RFP, um, but we're going to want to get it in the process now because July first is going to be here in the blink of an eye.
Yeah, and I've got a couple of feelers out there. I had a guy calling me today and been doing some online, so we're hopefully going to track that down fairly quickly.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, Jody's not here to yell at me for going off agenda, but, and the mayor can't do anything either because his mic's muted. Um, but Chris, do you have an update on the, on plows? On potential timelines?
And it was still six weeks. What's it been? Three weeks now? Two weeks?
Okay, so we're still three, a month, month and a half away still.
At best.
So, once the groundhog, or yeah, the groundhog says, snow is done, we'll get them.
We, exactly. We'll get them June thirtieth when there's no snow.
Perfect, okay. Thank you. Yay. Thank you, Ted. Um, number seven, update on community development, RFP. Sheri.
Um, with that, uh, we have.
Um, with that, we have, Ted and I have discussed it a little bit, you know, he's still drinking from the wa, the fire hose on all of his public works things and so as we, it's, it hasn't been on the top of the list because we have a lot of other things at the top of the list and so we are hoping to meet next week.
You're back up Ted. Number eight, public works reports, so on-call contractor, RFP.
Yes, I have that ready to go out, so hopefully to have, we're gonna have that one out next week and that's to, to get at least three contractors just under a on-call contract for repairs, whether they're emergencies or not, just someone when we have need, need of repair work, we can call in someone. So the RP's ready to go out, I'm just hopefully get it out later this week or next week.
Wonderful, thank you. MS4 audit?
Well, that was a joy. For those of you who haven't experienced one of those before, join me next time. We, we have some, a little bit of work to do. We went through a three-day audit, for those of you who don't know with the Division of Environmental Quality and the MS4, we, an MS4 is a community that either is over a certain population or that discharges runoff water to an impaired water body. And because our waters eventually make it into Salem and into the Beer Creek is the specific creek that goes out to the Utah Lake, it's an impaired water body, so basically they want you to control your runoff so you're not sending too many pollutants down to the creek and that, so there are certain stuff we have to have in place in our city facilities and in the way we handle construction projects. I think the construction side we had pretty well handled with, we've got an outside contractor that does all our SWIP inspections and has been doing pretty good and I think we're fairly okay on that side. On the city, the other is the facility, city facilities, how we control our pollutant runoff. And we have a little bit of work to do there, not necessarily on the actual work side, but on the paperwork side, so they're gonna come out with a list of everything we gotta do and then we got six months to get it done, so.
Wonderful, thank you, any questions for Ted? Okay, thank you. And thanks for enduring that audit.
Um, yeah, maybe one more update if I could real quick and I'm sorry, it's off-topic agenda just because it's, I'm working-
Jody's not here, you're good.
I'm good. I tried to swap places with her, but she wasn't biting. So we also have another grant that I'd almost forgot about until I got a, a call or a, well, an email that they sent the mayor and subsequently ended up working on, so we have the, a while ago, we played, we applied for a FEMA grant to replace or install culverts along Broad Hollow. It was kind of a, the overall NRCS work, the NRCS wasn't gonna pay for, so we went to FEMA and said, "Well, you guys put culverts in Long Broad Hollow." We had submitted that application months and months ago, seven, eight, nine months ago, something like that, well, we heard back, they were requesting some more information from us, so I'm working on that, got it pretty much all done, went out today, but we do have that one still standing out there and I think we're gonna probably end up with that funding to put in those culverts along Broad Hollow, but not guaranteed yet until we responded to all their, they had a bunch of questions on our applications, so we respond to all that and-
I selfishly said yes, but also it all runs out onto Woodland Hills Drive, so it will help alleviate that too and all that loose gravel's pretty dangerous, right where my house is and it's steep like, if there's any, you can't even walk out in the road, I've almost fallen or fallen a few times because, just because of all the gravel in the street, so it will be, it'll be nice.
So, so this one, and, and remember, because I, I heard a little whisper, this is independent of the basin project.
Yeah.
So this will happen whether the basin does or not, it's an independent project.
Should we talk to him about the-
We had to make it an independent project.
The possibility of water win or should we do wait?
Um, maybe wait on that one until we get a little more-
Put that on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Let's talk more about that sometime.
Yeah, yeah, this is, so two different funding sources, the basin versus the culvert through different, two different agencies and we had to make them independent projects in order to get the funding for the culverts, so if we get the funding for the culverts, it can be done independent of the basin.
But it's only the culverts on Broad Hollow, not the culverts for the whole city.
Right, just on Broad Hollow.
Good, wonderful. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, county reports, mayor, SESD and MAG and COG?
Um, I don't have anything to report on SESD, but MAG, I already told Brian, I'm trying to think, and, and well, Jeremy Searle, he, he put together a, a request for some MAG funding for a trail feasibility study and we were awarded that, we're getting a hundred thousand dollars to conduct a trail feasibility study, so that was a big win, I thought. That's everything I have, yeah, and thanks to Jeremy, that was his work and so we appreciate his efforts there.
And that was his second try, correct? So, good on him for keep, keep trying.
Yeah, yeah, well, and I, I like to think that I, I went and did the pitch and, you know, I think my thirty seconds really tipped the scales in our favor, so, you know, it's not all Jeremy, I, I just wanna make that, no, I'm just joking, it was all Jeremy, but it's good news.
Still a great pitch, mayor, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, that's, South Utah Valley Solid Waste District, we've actually got some cool things going on there. The new transfer station is wrapping up construction, we are currently on track to have it fully open for spring cleaning, which will be absolutely amazing for everybody. I'm actually going to try and get the council a tour of the new facility, there's a really cool education room, so for other facility or other departments or entities, you know, schools could do field trips there to learn about waste disposal as well as recycling, so there's, there's some really cool things there, so I'll let you guys know on dates potentially for a tour of that facility, but that currently, we're kind of going back and forth, but in April will be the ribbon cutting of that new facility, though it'll already be open by the time we do the ribbon cutting, but we're trying to figure out what the dates will work because that's also during the Cities and Towns Conference down in St. George, so we're trying to make sure we don't put it at that same time, so once I have that date solidified, I'll let you guys know. Councilmember Hutchings, SUV MWA and Mount Nebo Water Agency.
So, both, both of those committees actually met and I was in Tampa for Sumba's meeting and they do not broadcast it, so I couldn't join, so we're waiting for them to send us a digital recording so that I can report on that and I was climbing on an airplane yesterday when Mount Nebo met and so was unable to join that meeting as well, so as soon as I get those videos, I'll put a summary together and, and report back.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Kinniston, the, your favorite committee, 911 Dispatch.
I'm ready to chat for an hour, but I'll, I'll try and go through these fast, I have three things from the, from the central dispatch. I attended, we did get our siren equipment out of dispatch and so we need to kind of, I don't know how to advertise this Janet, but we need to advertise that our sirens are in operate, they're, they're not working until we do some work.
Will you send me an email with some information?
I will, I will do that.
We should probably then take down the notification that comes to everybody through-
Yeah, that's gotta stop too.
-through Everbridge because I keep getting, you know, when, as we get those on the first Saturday and then people are calling, "I didn't hear it, I didn't hear it," right?
It just came out this month.
Right, so it would be good to be able to notify people.
Get rid of the Everbridge, yeah.
Ted?
Did you have something to add?
You?
Okay, okay, so, so that's, that's something to be aware of. One of the problems dispatch is having right now is they are still understaffed and they have all of these part-time employees that keep working too many hours and it bothers the board that they're flipping in and out of full-time, part-time because when they work too many hours, they're owed benefits that part-time don't get, so there's some work going on with that and to do it properly per state rules for benefits for, for those employees. Then the third thing I want to mention, this was so interesting that I sent copies to Ted and to our medical captain, they are, they're, they're publishing and finalizing a very complete policy on how they handle text 911 calls and it's fascinating to know what they do on their end when I text 911 with a problem. And so you need to know those details so you know what to expect when you text them and there's reasons they won't call you back, there's, there's all kinds of good support in this policy and I would be willing to share that with anyone interested in the city.
Include that as well.
Yeah, it's really, it's really, it's kind of fun to read, I will do that, yeah, and that's all.
I have texted 911 before, so.
I have too and it works.
It works, good, yeah.
So, yeah, you'll find an interesting read.
Thank you. Ted, did you want to comment now?
Uh, no.
Okay. You just wanted to hold on to the mic?
Yeah, I like it.
You're-
If there, if that conversation were a little further, I'd, I'd, I'd have a problem.
You're good.
I'll find a little talk.
Okay.
About the sirens?
Okay, okay, councilmember Lund, well, you don't have to, to report anything district-wise.
Um, just, we had our finance meeting.
Okay, I think that one's next agenda, right?
Is it?
Yeah, because we do, first meeting of the month is district assignments and then the other one is, is our city assignments.
Pull on a Jody, oh yeah.
I'm just being mean, so unless you want to talk about the finance, you're good. Okay.
I already did kind of.
Perfect, okay, councilmember Malkovich, Utah Valley Animal Shelter.
Um, nothing to report from last time that I know of, I'm, I still am not on their email list, so.
I tried to forward them to you.
You forwarded me those, but they aren't sending them, so I've requested that, but I don't know if I've missed anything or not.
I don't think so.
So, but nothing has been, of course, I wanted to give an update on legislative session, there are eight hundred and thirty-nine bills out right now, seventeen days left to go, so there'll still be some more coming out, we're tracking two hundred and nineteen that affect, that have a impact on municipal government, so I'm working, I'm pretty well at the Capitol every day and working on different ones of those and testifying etc., but the one exciting thing is our, which I've already told all of you, but I haven't told the public yet, is our snowplow bill, went through the House unanimously and is now on the Senate, went unanimous also through the House Committee and the Senate Transportation Committee and now is on Senate consent, which-
You got it on the consent agenda?
I got it on this consent agenda, so it's very exciting because we were able to have the Utah League of Cities and Towns, the Utah Association of Counties and the Department of Public Safety all endorse this bill and so that was a huge win for us and I feel really good about what's gonna happen in our city and that we will be in compliance.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, anything on upcoming council meetings? No, perfect, okay, then we will close the work session and then we will re-adjourn at, let's see here, it's seven forty-four, let's come back at seven fifty to do the, our city council meeting.
Yeah, usually she puts on here the, you know, legislators important. That, it makes, I think, so, is there gonna be just a lot right now and I keep thinking, oh, it changes every day, we have a call every single-
It is interesting what goes on up there, so you, you have a good-
So we have a call every single morning that says what happened the night before and then every Monday we meet for a couple of hours and then every day we have certain things that were assigned to the legislators off now and then I was able to testify for both the transportation committees and while I met with each community member individually, first of both committees, then testify. And the legislators actually tried this snowplow and so, she, it's a sheet and she said, "I love this bill, oh my gosh," and so that was kind of fun. And so she, nobody knew that, she, that's one of the things that she does, so that was kind of exciting for her to be able to, you know, heartfelt, so it's been, it's been a good experience. They, the Association of Counties came up to me and they said, they presented it to their board, the board was just like, "Kindly, kindly," right, because nobody could figure out and they didn't get it, get it out there and didn't realize that we were against the law either, so this will, this will impact a lot of, a lot of, and our-
Okay, so would you be serving that leader of the Republican Party? Are we gonna be talking? If we have a trial, I don't forget a second vote, so it's, and with the mayor, he was over that, but they're actually, we just pulled, you know, so, no, basically my, my role as mayor was very, 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 very painful.
Thankful.
Because if it becomes big, that means something happens in the mayor's head.
Well, you guys have a lot of work to do, awesome, you have a lot of good stuff.
Also.
Also,
I, I know.
No, you don't.
If she doesn't come soon, we'll start throwing stuff. Please, yeah. You should have a doll somewhere that you can. Janet, you ready? Okay, we'll call this, uh, Woodland Hill, Woodland Hills Council Meeting to Order. Um, we will have an invocation by council member Kinniston and a pledge of allegiance led by council member Lunt.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be able to serve the city and we're grateful for those we serve. We are thankful that we live in such a beautiful place. We ask thee to help us make decisions that will benefit the current and future needs of our city, that we will be mindful of all of the needs and, and plan accordingly and correctly with the resources we have. We are grateful for those that serve and volunteer and do many things that make this city run. Bless our citizens who may need help at this time and be with us in this meeting and help us do the right things. And we ask these blessings in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll go into public comment. Um, if there's anybody who is here that would like to say anything, you're welcome to. Uh, we just asked to keep your remarks to around two minutes. Anybody online? No? We'll close, uh, the public comment portion and we'll go into the business and discussion. Let me find the, my wonderful cheat sheet by Jody here. Okay, so we will start with, um, item number 15, um, the decision to make the Big Tooth Maple Festival a city-sponsored event. And by sponsored, I believe we're saying a city event, correct?
Yes.
Take the word sponsor now.
Yep. City event.
Perfect.
I make a motion that we, um, make the Big Tooth Maple Festival a city event.
I'll second it.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No. The motion pass. Um, number 16, approval of the preliminary plat, approval for Bellevue subdivision plat B. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve that as recommended by the planning commission.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I was trying to give Brian a chance, but.
So that makes it easier for people here. They can't sign anything. Um, wonderful. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, you guys. Sorry to make you wait just for that. Thank you. Item number 17, approval to record ordinance 202205 with the Utah County Recorder's Office advising property owners identified in the hazards overview map dated August 16th, 2022 of the requirement to conduct a hazard, a natural hazard study. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Number 18, I believe, yes. Resolution 2024-08, appointing individuals to serve on the Parks, Trails and Recreation Committee. Um, do I have a motion?
Can you remind me what two names tho, those were?
So that was, uh, sorry, Brian?
That was, I apologize. I need to pull that up really quick. I've got it here. Um, so it's Sherry Berger, Michelle Crump and Judy Pickel.
Pickell.
Pickell.
Perfect. Thank you, Brian. Uh, do I have a motion?
I move that we.
Yeah, I like that, but. Go ahead.
I, I move that we, uh, pass resolution 202408 as written.
Wonderful. Second?
I'll second that.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, we are going to table resolution 202408 appoint, nope, we're not. We're appoint, we are tabling, nope, we're not going to table because it didn't make the work, the Senate. We're good. So we're going to go to 19, approval of large purchase requests, um, or sale of surplus equipment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve phase one.
I'll second that. Oh, sorry.
No, just as per the description that was given to us by Ted.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I second that.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Um, we do have a, a little bit of business to discuss in closed session.
I'll motion that we go into closed session.
Thank you. Excellent. Um, Carrie Malkovich?
Yes.
Uh, Ben Hilliard, yes. Janet Lunt?
Yes.
Daryl Kinniston?
Yes.
Brian Hutchings?
Yes.
So moved. Um, we are now going into closed session. Thank you, everybody. If we could, uh, thank you, Sherry. Appreciate you.
You're kicking me out, Sherry.
Yep. Goodbye. Thanks for the great clown job, by the way.
Sherry, 7:00 AM?
Yeah, or if you want to do 6:30, that's.
I can do 6:30. I won't have my face on yet. I'll be scary.
I won't either, but.
Uh, don't end it. Just stop the recording.
He has had a teacher. Yeah, that way Chris and Brett, Brian can still be on. And then we grab that door.
Yeah, anybody in the house. There's not a button on this. I can tell it's beyond my technical. Ben knows.
I've got the big training. I got a mini training.
No, I don't know if I got this.
Okay, well, welcome back.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, city council.
We'll see you, everybody.
Thank you.
See ya.
Thanks.